Our remaining discussion action item tonight, the Local Control Accountability Plan, first reading, and Ms. Allen, you're up.
As Ms. Allen's approaching the podium, I also wanted to share with the board that Alameda County Office of Education, which is the agency that needs to approve our LCAP, has offered, graciously offered, to read drafts of the plan and give districts feedback. They can't accommodate all of the 18 districts, 17, 18 districts in Alameda County, but we were able to sign up, and so Dr. Rubio, Ms. Allen, and I will be going to the county office at 10:45 on Friday, in which they will have a staff person on the program side and a staff person on the business side, read our plan and give us feedback on it. So I just want to make sure the board was aware of that, because I think that would be very helpful. And so with that, Ms. Allen.
Good evening. So I will just, today we'll be reading from the draft, so there's not a PowerPoint presentation to accompany this. The, so pages one through two just basically give direction and explanation of the LCAP, and tonight I'll focus a lot on the section with services and actions, section two and three. So we have pages one and two, which are basically the directions, and they give explanation of the LCAP, and then pages three through six give explanation of stakeholder engagement. And so for the most part, this will still need to be updated to include some of the recent meetings that occurred, as well as shifting some of the dates here. So as I go through each section, what I'll ask the two board members, are there questions about it, versus going through the, reading through the whole plan, and then asking for questions at the end. So are there any questions in section one?
Yeah. Uh, section one. I did, I did have some que, did you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Catching up. Um, let me find my questions. On page six. In the second paragraph in the left-hand column, starting, it says, "Students at secondary school held LCAP workshops and leadership class and conducted surveys and gathered information in the," and then it trails off.
Okay.
So not only, uh, did I want to point that out to you, that it, that fill in the sentence, but in particular, I'd like to see you brag about the tremendous work that the students did there in gathering surveys, and as I recall from the used-to-gather presentation here, they, they surveyed 36 percent of all the high school students, maybe since then it's even grown. But, uh, that's, that's gotta be the highest number in the state of students self-conducting and self-serving their peers at the, you know, high school level to gather input into the, um, into the LCAP. So I'd like to see that level of, of, you know, that percentage reflected in, in our documents, so that we can trumpet that.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions?
The, uh, the, has the, you mentioned already, one of my questions was, the meeting seemed to end in March, and you've been conducting other meetings, and you're gonna update this?
That is correct.
Yeah. So, um, the next version, we'll see more in there about what, what's been going on since March with respect to the community, engagement and teachers' engagement.
Well, basically, that's correct, and you'll see the updates.
Yeah. Um, are there particular highlights of what's been going on since then? And so I'm, in particular, I'm curious to know what, if anything additionally, we've gathered input from, from teachers and students, and the PAC, the Parent Advisory Council.
So that'll have the update about the meetings that have had with Parent Advisory Council, D-LAC, students, and Common Core Steering Committees, those are the four.
Okay. The Common Core Steering Committee are the teachers that are-
Yes.
-come together around the Common Core.
Great.
Is there, um, yeah, you, in particular, Ms. Allen, you know, did a tremendous amount of work that's reflected here in, in the January to March timeframe, sort of a, a one-woman whirling dervish of meetings and activities, so I wanna acknowledge that and thank you for that, that effort.
Mm-hmm.
Are there, uh, and I guess just kind of going forward in the future, wanna think about ways that, um, I ask you if, if you think there are ways to involve more staff, more parents, more students in the, in the engagement, so that it's not all falling on one person's shoulders at the, at the district office, even though there, you know, probably will continue to be that expectation at some level, but how we can share and broaden the workload.
Well, the other, the other ideas are just thinking about how to engage particularly anti-8th parents, because they didn't have a functioning PTO, so a lot of the information was dependent on the parents who represented anti-8th at the parent, on the advisory council, as well as what came from the school-side council. So I think that's, that'll be included as well, because another part in terms of attending LCAP workshops is that it's okay to state what you would like to see more of and include. And at the end, there was also some, we have a parent who represents special, who has children, who has grandchildren with special needs, and also we've, as the parent, as the advisory council, we talked about, how can we have more parents of special needs students be involved in the LCAP, so they won't feel like they're left out. And so, and I'll have some recommendations in the other section that came up from those conversations.
Okay. How many Parent Advisory Council meetings have you had?
We've had, to just have about three. We actually have done a lot of work.
Yeah.
Because it is, and there, it's a group that's very engaged, and for the two parents who are from D-LAC, I've had to meet with them separately, and with the help of Ms. Miller, have, have gotten feedback from them as well, because they can't make it during the time that we have, and so hopefully that same, hopefully, I'm hoping that that same group will be the group that will continue next year, because I really believe that a lot of them bring a lot of expertise, and they're very thoughtful in terms of their contribution to the conversation.
And now you, you know, help to train them for going forward, too.
Hopefully. Any other questions in section one?
Yeah. Yeah, I think those are my questions on, on section one, and my next one's got into goals.
Okay.
Mr. Patz, did you have any?
I'm okay at the moment.
Yeah.
I'll chime up, don't worry.
Okay. All right.
So section two, the next pages, seven through 14, basically states the goals and what the progress indicators are, and so instead of, what I'll do is just address the goals, and I think, and some of the indicators we're using are a lot of the baselines or district-wide assessments, which will, is closely related to a specific need that we need in terms of data and assessment. So the, so those pages address the goals and progress indicators, which we have goal one, um, which is to strengthen, no, all students are provided with high-quality instruction to meet the new California Common Core state standards, and improve yearly academic performance, graduation rates, and post-secondary acceptance rates. And so the language that you see in terms of high-quality instruction includes, this is the exact language that have come from various stakeholders as they define what this, what this goal means to them. And so part of the process with stakeholders was just to introduce and explain what LCFF and LCAP, what that process is, and what the, and what the actual content entails, and the next part was to use the long list that they had and kind of categorize it. And so as they defined and what it meant to them, this language directly comes from them. And so what you see in column one is to strengthen the instructional needs of students, we need to, and then you'll see a list of A through, well, A through C, I believe, to do that, and then we also have the areas in terms of what defines those, that goal. So, any questions about that particular goal? And I think through, some of this looks like it's cut off, but any questions about that particular goal?
Yeah, so that's, that's my first question, is the, at least on the first goal, I don't think it's the case on goals two and three, but I'm not positive, but on the first goal, it does seem cut off, 'cause even looking at the third and fourth column, they refer to goals going from A to G, J to K, so at least goes to K, and, but it stops at C.
And I think, and I don't know if this is an issue of converting it to PDF, which I believe that is the case.
Yeah.
And so when it was converted, it was converted in this manner, but there isn't, there, there are K, there are steps A through K in terms of what we need.
Yeah, and I mean, professional development is cut off, I mean, in the second column. So it seems to go on, and I guess, um, it, I don't know, can, can you post that on the website, or update this, or email it to the board members?
I can.
We kind of, but also make it available to the public, so that we can kind of see what-
Yes.
... direction you're going in.
Mm-hmm. And unfortunately, I have the PDF version in my hand, so it wasn't any, it wasn't, I think it was the issue of the conversion, and, and that's where items were cut off.
Yep. The, in, in general, I guess I had some, some general comments and specific comments.
Of goals, goal one?
On, on the goals.
Okay.
Uh, and-
So I'll just go through the goals, and then you can comment on any of them in any particular order?
Well-
Or did you want to start?
Maybe I'll make my general comments-
Okay.
-and then I'll save the specific ones till you're going through them specifically. But the, a general comment is that we, the LCAP is supposed to, and I, I think there's been some conflicting evidence, but I think the, or advice, but I think the, the best advice from the state board and at WestEd is that the LCAP is supposed to capture nearly all of the district's LCFF dollars and how we're spending it, and that there might be a few things, like post-employment retirement benefits that you're spending LCFF dollars on that you wouldn't capture in an LCAP, but it should describe the breadth of the program, including the base supplemental concentration. And I didn't get, from kind of looking at, this is where goals relates to the specific actions expenditures for section three, it didn't seem that we were covering the breadth of our entire program in, in describing all of it. I think some of these goals must be, because they're, they're quite broad, I mean, strengthening our academic instructional needs, and K to eight and nine to 12, we must be, but I, I don't think we somehow, after setting that goal, kind of in the next columns of how we're doing it, and what, what the actions and expenditures are associated with implementing those goals, has fully captured the, the whole 6-point X million dollars of the district budget. So that's one comment. And I discussed this with Dr. Sugiyama, and he said, you know, and I forwarded the advice from WestEd, and you said, "Don't expect it in this version, uh, you know, that'll be in the next round." But I did want to, to state that. The other kind of general comment is that I think we need to spell out specifically the, the sub-goals, or the sub-priority areas that are in each of the eight state priority areas. So, and, and we did, for example, we have, it seems like we've addressed instructional materials for all students, which is one of the sub-goals. I think we're very close to addressing properly-assigned and fully-credentialed teachers for all our students. I don't think we've addressed good repair. I don't see that addressed, or some of the other, in the school climate, there are sub-goals that are in the statute around graduation rates, suspension expulsion rates, some very specific.
If it's not there, it is, and that's because the PDF cut it off.
Okay.
So the facilities are included, like in K, or something like that, and it's just stating in good condition, and the reason you don't necessarily see the, the facilities didn't come out the first time, because that wasn't the main group that can, that had the concern about facilities, I think, were students. And so it was, and it was based on situations, being in the building that we're in, that none of, we can't do anything about. So for the most part, because it belongs to Oakland Unified School District. So that, however, in general, it has been addressed in terms of some of the other action items, particularly in athletics, et cetera. So that was addressed as well as, what was the other one you stated? I just believe it was cut off.
Suspension and expulsion.
That was, that was stated, that was stated as well.
So those, some of those are part of goal one?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, well, I didn't, I didn't, so I don't know if part of the, in section three, the specific actions that tie back to goal one, um, got cut off, but I didn't see metrics, if I did, I forgot, that addressed what, how we're, much we're gonna improve on graduation rates, or how much we're gonna reduce suspension expulsion.
It was, it was there because I used the scorecard to, to actually-
Okay.
-do the metrics, so again-
So graduation might be in there, but maybe a suspension expulsion, or the discipline piece that-
Yeah, so I remember type, typing all of that up.
Okay.
And again, it may not be in here, because whatever happened to convert it to a PDF, I'm noticing that a lot of it was cut off.
Okay. Good. Well, that's, you'll send that around, and we'll take another look at that.
I would just like to ask a clarifying question with regard to costs associated with some of the goals, and how those are identified using all the LCFF funds. How do you perceive that to be presented? I'm trying to, because my last discussion with the board, I explained that that's gonna be one of the most difficult things to do, because we don't have an accounting code structure that breaks those out by these goals. So I just, I just need to conceptualize what you, what you want to see, so I can create something that is more representative of, of what your question is.
Yeah, so I think, uh, I'd start with the other document that you sent us, which is just a one-pager with, somehow you had broken out, here's supplemental concentration total over three years, here's the base, and you had it divided into, um, like base funding, and then in pupil support, or instructional, you had two lines, instructional and pupil support.
I had two lines. One was instructional expenditures-
Right.
-and the other was pupil support.
Right.
Those were base dollars used in those two categories.
Right.
How, how much further do you want us to go with that representation? I can pull out items with regard to facilities, and I can pull out other items, but I just want to know how-
Yeah.
-how deep in the weeds you want to go with identifying costs.
I guess I don't want, I don't want super-deep, because then it becomes really lengthy and hard to read, and you are using some judgment, obviously, but we should somehow show how it's cut up in a rational way that makes sense. I think a lot of the dollars, right, 80, 85 percent are gonna be our personnel, and most of our personnel are instructional personnel.
Absolutely.
So implementing Common Core, and, you know, that goal number one, that's gonna, that's gonna eat up, I mean, you could have a big line there, that's just instructional, you know, expenditures on having our teachers reach these academic goals, and, and so that, that's gonna eat up a lot of it, and then, you know, so I think you can, yeah, you're right, you have to map sort of our goals and the eight state priorities kind of against our expenditures, and, and make some decisions about what, what goes where.
Right, and I, that's part of my difficulty, and I, I expressed this a couple of meetings ago, so I have a better picture. It, it might not be perfect next time we present this, so, uh, this is gonna be a work in progress.
Yeah.
Again, this is, uh, our first time doing this, so we will refine the numbers to get them a little more specific, and we can be very specific with the Common Core dollars that we received. I don't know if we've identified either base dollars or supplemental concentration grant dollars with regard to how those are funneled to Common Core yet, so, and that's some of the things that we're determining now.
Mm-hmm.
So, Vice President, what I, what I'm hearing you say is actually, I mean, obviously there are components to this, such as approving the goals, but assuming that, given the draft goals we have, that what you'd like to see is what parts of addressing those draft goals are being funded through LCFF base funding.
Right.
So for example-
I mean, are all, is the whole supplemental concentration, I assume, is reflected here? I didn't actually go through and add it up.
Yeah, so I think, I think the only thing that staff will have-
So then we want to make sure the base funding is-
Yeah, so I think the only thing the staff would have to think about is, for example, um, you know, student access to rigorous advanced extracurricular specialty courses, we would have to find some way to identify what those are, and what dollar amount out of the LCFF base funding is going toward addressing that goal. And so we might say there are, you know, 10 FTE teachers at a cost of, you know, $750,000, and these teachers teach rigorous advanced extracurricular-type courses. So you're looking for kind of a one-sentence, or at the most, two-sentence description of how the base funding dollars are being used to address each of these goals.
Yeah, where, where it comes in is really in section three with the, 'cause that's where you list the expenditures, next to actions and services, and, and the, the goals are the first column, and it's actions and services, and then the expenditures. So, so I think it's, you're, you're not actually coding or mapping against the goals, you're really directly coding and mapping against how those actions and services are articulated.
Okay.
So you could put a lot into providing, you know, fully-credentialed, highly-qualified teachers, and, um, uh, you know, sufficient instructional materials and good repair that, that could capture a good portion of our district dollars, and then, as you did, on these more specific things about providing a full-time technology teacher, I think that's quite helpful to have that, at that level of specificity and dollar amount.
Which means, so basically that's placing everyone's position and their salary in the, in the LCAP, particularly when you have individuals who are single subjects or by themselves. So I think maybe identifying, maybe this is a second stab at a, at a later date, but what I do know is that when you have teachers who teach five or six different subjects, it's hard to capture that in this document. And so, and I don't know if that's what you're stating.
I'm not suggesting you break it out, five or six different subjects. I, I'm comfortable with it at the level of generality that I just sort of laid out, providing fully-prepared teachers, providing, you know, you know, if we have a separate sort of action that is providing pupil supports, in terms of resource teachers, or special ed teachers, or counselors, or that, you know, those can be different lines, but you could have a very large number in, in one line. LA Unified has 96 million in one line. I think, I think that's too big, it sort of says that's just too big a district, but, um-
So what you're stating is separate teachers, so, so how many of them are special ed? How many maybe are high school? How many, is that what you're suggesting?
If that, I, I don't want to write it, you know, I do, I want to respect how you've organized it, so, uh, I think, yes, map it against the, the goals you've set and the actions, and it might be that you have to add some actions that are quite general, like providing fully-prepared credential teachers that are properly assigned, professional development on Common Core, if you can cut that out.
So in other words, in some, in some instances, to, to address the goal, it basically will be every teacher's responsibility, so in that instance, when we're talking about all teachers, we're looking at LCFF base funding that represents the cost of all those teachers. In other instances, it's not necessarily all teachers.
Right.
It may be certain personnel, not, and, and of course, in addition to that, non-personnel budget allocations, whether it's professional development or whatever. So, um, so I think what staff would need to do is go down through each of these goals and ask ourselves the question, to what extent is this goal being addressed and funded through the LCFF base grant currently?
That is, that, I mean, maybe, maybe I'm missing the point, but that's what is in section three? Is that what the section referring to? Because I know we're on section two, and so you moved into section three, because that's where all the-
We are, yeah, they're interrelated, so it, it is in section three, but it did, I did not see, you know, $6 million worth of expenditures articulated in section three. There seems to be mostly, I didn't add it up, but it looked like it was focusing on supplemental concentration expenditures, and we, we need to reflect all of our expenditures. And part of that reason might be because I think we're doing things that we didn't articulate as things, specific actions that we are taking, that are quite general, that are sort of core provision of base programming, that have, you know, large expenditures associated with them. And, and the reason to sort of, it's not just a formulaic exercise, but the, the, the state is now giving districts much more flexibility and release from categoricals in exchange for being more transparent than we've ever been about our dollars, and if all we're talking about are showing people is what we're doing with supplemental concentration over here, but we never kind of reveal what else we're doing with our, you know, bulk of our dollars-
Right.
-then that's not really being transparent and giving people the opportunity to say, "Well, wait a minute, what are we, what can we not do anymore, because we really want to see something new in this direction?" So I just-
So the, so really, your point is, is to, is to state it, so when you have to make decisions, it can be clear to people where those decisions are happening, and where those dollars are.
Yeah, where the, where the, sort of the, all of our LCFF dollars are, so we know what, what our priorities should be.
Yeah, so basically, section three needs to, to the greatest extent possible, define those services and actions that are being funded through LCFF base grant. We could assume that a very high percentage of that can be described in that column, but there may be some things the district's doing, and I, my guess would be, would be, you know, a very small percentage of things which aren't necessarily aligned to any of the goals, whether they're kind of fall more in the category of operational kinds of things.
Which is consistent with what the WestEd advice was, that there might be a few things that don't, but it, but nearly all, to quote them, were, you know, should be reflected. And the, the, yeah, I'll pause there and-
Yeah, I mean, when I look at this, what I see is the first two line items listed are really gonna be the bulk of the funds, and there's just not a dollar amount attached to salaries. It says it's gonna be salaries and benefits, and there's just not a dollar amount, and I think that captures a big chunk of where the expenditure and the funds are gonna be going, and so I think if you can put some money numbers in there-
In section three, I think.
Yeah, talking about section three. So, yeah, you guys, I'm with you on the jumping, but- So, yeah, you guys, I'm with you on the jumping between sections. I'm ready for 2 and he's in 3, but we'll get there.
Okay.
So, because I think in every other item, you really do line out, hey, either we don't know yet as to be determined, or you've put some dollar amounts in there.
And the thing that you both did, which I think is really terrific and a step ahead of many, many other districts, is folding in the Title 1 and the parcel tax. Because that is such a big part of our expenditures. It's not, again, it's not transparent not to say, oh, here's 30% of our budget, the parcel tax, how we're spending that. So, we don't have to do that by the law, but I think it's completely in the spirit of telling our story and showing our picture. And it's also a public relations tool, right? To tell folks, this is where your parcel tax investment is going and how we're using it. So, I don't know if you captured all the parcel tax dollars. I assume you didn't. But again, I think it will map on to whatever these base dollar amounts are that it, you'll be able to say, this is the LCFF and this is our, you know, we've got $2 million of parcel tax and supporting our teachers. Yeah, great.
Okay, thanks for the comment. I understand what you're suggesting and I think there's a way for us to get to that place.
Great, thanks.
I want to just acknowledge that Dr. Rubio is here. And since he will probably after June 30th continue the work with the board and staff on the LCAP, I want to make sure he has the opportunity to either comment or ask questions.
I think that's a great idea. In fact, you know, you want to come up here and use a mic? Because if you do have any questions, we want to make sure they're captured on camera and mic. Okay.
While he comes up, I want to go back to Section 2. You mentioned that you're going to meet with some parents and grandparents of students with special needs. But you throw in the second item, accessible to students and teachers. And this is a big thing for me is I want to make sure the technology and the curriculum we buy has universal design and a lot of the accommodations built in, large print, speech to text. And so, as you're revising this, I would like to see that a little bit more clearly illustrated that we're, as we expend this money on the technology and on the curriculum materials, that that's already embedded. Most of them have it, but sometimes people make choices and don't realize that, you know, you buy materials and you don't buy, you don't buy the add-ons that have, that make it accessible to students with unique learning styles. And so, just make sure there's some touch on universal design in there, which is things like large print, text to speech, speech to text, things like that.
So, okay, but the, and I know some of it is addressing the tech plan. And I know as we transition to a new IT person, so I'll do my best, but that's not my area necessarily expertise. So, I'll try to do that before it's time, but I know that's something that we have to address. And hopefully, it's more clear, laid out in our tech plan.
Thank you.
So, before we go to Dr. Rubio and for folks at home watching, this is, if you weren't watching at our last meeting, Dr. John Rubio, our incoming superintendent, who will be deputy, a temporary deputy superintendent for June and begin on July 1st with the district as superintendent. Before you ask your question, I had one more general comment on the goal section in 2, Ms. Allen. And that is that I found the, I greatly appreciated and valued your trying to capture in the LCAP the community participation and articulation of needs, which is how I understood, and I believe you explained the first goal column to be. Is that right?
What, are you in a specific...
I'm in goal section, yeah. All the goals, first section.
Okay, so...
Sort of, you know, Goal 1, that A, B, C, those are the kind of articulation of community, the community needs and desires that you gathered from...
That is correct.
Yeah, so I appreciate that and I do think we ought to capture that. I thought that the, in essence, having two goal columns, a first and then a second goal column, was somewhat confusing and that it, sometimes the first goal column was actually more concrete and specific than the second, more general goal column. And that, so that was one comment that I thought created some confusion. And that the second comment is that it didn't seem that we were addressing all of the goals that are in that first goal column. And I think that we're supposed to be identifying the goals that we are addressing with specific actions and expenditures. And that, it was almost unfair to say, here are our goals and what we're going to be working on. And then, when you get to like the last section of 3 to say, well, what are we actually doing? And how are we going to measure whether improving on this goal? There's nothing about, you know, some of these very desirable, you know, jobs or internships or specific goals that we've laid out.
So, there's the goals, but then there's the reality. And so, Goal 3 is your reality in terms of what specifically you have to make a determination on what you have to spend. So, in, so again, in capturing what we need to do, Goal 3 states what is the current reality or what can we possibly do? Or what have the stakeholders identified over and over and over? So, they made, so when they did the categorization, which is in Section 1, basically there was a template to state, what are the needs? What does this mean to us? What do we have that works well? What is it that doesn't? And what is the critical need? So, on Goal 3 is the critical need from stakeholders. So, no, you won't see necessarily everything, not this time around because Goal 3, in my opinion, is the reality that we live in or the reality that we need to live in.
When you say Goal 3, do you mean...
I mean, Section 3. I mean, Section 3, yes.
Yeah, specific, yeah. So, I guess how I would suggest for staff to consider is to create an appendix that says, here are all the things that we, that we're identified and we value, but we can't get to. And that we do, we focus specifically on the ones that we have selected and that we are going to be doing actions and spending money on. And I think that is my understanding of the spirit of the LCAP is here's our plan. And our plan is, these are the things we rejected, that's in the appendix. And maybe here's why and we'll get to those and we'll keep track of those. But that we shouldn't say our goal is to do something that we're not actually moving on. That would be my suggestion.
Hmm, I disagree. I think we are, so the issue is not that we're not moving on it. The issue is that we've been strategic in terms of the stakeholders stating this is the critical need. So, maybe that needs to be explained. So, it's not that the goal is not moved on. There's a general goal in order to, in order to define what that is, the stakeholders defined, had a definition of it. And then, the next step is to actually identify what that critical need is. So, therefore, this plan will not become wallpaper like other plans or stuck on a shelf or collect dust. And that we actually can be, we're a tiny district, they can't do a lot of big things. And again, I took that advice from when we went through WASC. And so, it's just to focus the critical need that, that Section 3, that this is what the stakeholders are actually addressing. So, it may be, it's just a difference of opinion, but I guess when we receive feedback at ACOE, et cetera, and come back with another draft, we can have that discussion.
Okay. Dr. Rubio?
I just wanted to say first, I can tell this took a lot of time, so thanks. I'm sure you put a lot of time into this. I had one kind of question that's just, I'm wondering about it. And actually, you don't have to respond to this one, it's just a kind of a thought that I can see that you, you know, in your feedback sessions and your input that you ask people, what are the needs? What are the critical needs? And I can see there are at least, I guess, seven to 10 staff positions in here. I'm just as I'm glancing through it. But I guess, I don't know, and I don't know, and there may not be time in our current timeline for this, but the hard part it seems to me for districts is how do you tie this to sort of the direction of the district? And so, and I don't know to what extent, when you got feedback, that was possible. Maybe it's hard, and I don't know. So, I'm just, I'm kind of wondering about that, but that's just a comment. One question I have that just is kind of standing out to me though right now, and I'm sorry I haven't got to look at this and talk to you before tonight, is on the, on Page 16, there's some items listed for adoptions for English, Language Arts and Math. My experience would tell me that the costs for those kinds of adoptions are two to three times the amount of money that we have listed here. A math adoption alone, I mean, I had gotten a quote recently from a traditional big publisher. It was $320,000 for an eight-year contract. So, I'm just, so I'm just a little bit nervous about that part here. I just wanted to bring it up to your attention and to both of you, just to think about that. Maybe these numbers need to at least be doubled in terms of adoptions. And I know that could affect other pieces in here. So, that's the kind, the one big question for me.
Was that for more students? Does that affect the cost of the adoption?
Well, it would, it would, it would be dependent on the number of students. But I'm still, I'm still a little bit, yeah, and maybe I need to, I guess I need to run the math myself. So, I mean, maybe, and I don't know how you guys came up with the numbers, maybe they're fine.
This is based off of previous adoptions that we've had here.
Okay. All right, so, yeah.
So, it's a range and it's a plus or minus, but when you're dealing with, when it's just two schools and you're not, and you have, so say for instance, you have a social studies department. There's only one department. We have cohorts of 60 students. So, it's not as, so it's based off of what we've purchased in the past.
Right, all right, okay. And I guess I'd still wonder though, because we haven't had adoptions for seven or eight years, right?
Not here.
Right, oh, you've had recent adoption?
We've had, yeah, but at least since I've been here, we've had recent adoptions.
Oh, okay, okay, so maybe it's fine. Okay, that was, that's my one question.
And in terms of, well, just to address it, because you may forget and I will too, but to address the district goals is, that's, it's all based off. So, every time every stakeholder received it, there was a section for what are the district goals? What are the district educational goals? And then, what are the state priorities? So, these are directly based off of what the district goals, what they stated back in September or October.
I guess I was just wondering when they actually, when you asked, because you had some key questions. It sounded like, you know, what are the key critical priorities? What are the needs or the critical needs? I'm wondering to what extent, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering about, because I can see there's a lot of positions in here. And sometimes I think when you, when we ask groups of people like, hey, what do you think the needs are? Well, we need another teacher in this area. I need another teacher in this area. And I can be this person. We need a middle teacher here. So, I'm just wondering to what extent do people stay focused on sort of the direction of the district? I don't know.
And one, and the areas that come up is that we need more people, based on the bandwidth that we have here in a tiny district. So, the larger our goal is, the more that you need to support it. And again, going through the experience of WASC for the third time, it really hit home when he stated, we're a tiny school trying to do big things. So, the more things or activities you want to do, you have to, your staff becomes a person, one person of five people. So, if you continue to have those large goals, then you have to address the bandwidth of your staff. But if you pull, if you scale back on them, and that's, well, that's where the conversation came from. So, just to give you information of how the conversations were, this is what came up. Because the first conversation was just a long laundry list of wants and needs, what's your wish list? And then, the next part was, let's talk about it in terms of what the goals are, what, describe the goal in terms of what it means to you. What are the strengths? What do we currently have? And what is the critical need?
Just a couple of thoughts for the board to keep in mind. So, in my previous tenure in the district, I think, and I think Ms. Allen, I think, is accurate in the statement that we are a little district trying to do big things. But there are a couple of realities we have to look at. And I don't think they're insurmountable, but it's things to think about as the district moves forward to define its LCAP. And in addition, to just look at overall the LCFF funding, the base grant funding. And I guess it could apply to parcel tax allocations. And that is, one of the limiting factors, what makes the implementation of this type of concept difficult is because we're small, we don't have the staffing flexibility that large districts do. So, if you take a high school, 2,000 students, they can take the existing staff based on their credentials and they can move people around to either develop, implement, address new programs in a much easier way. And what happens in a small district like Emory is if you don't have the people with the right credential authorizations, then immediately you're somewhat handicapped. Secondly, even if you have the additional funds to add personnel, if you can't fund a full-time person, you're hampered in the ability to hire an individual because no one's going to come to teach two periods during the day at the high school around a particular program. So, you know, I mean, we kind of continue to struggle, yet continue to try to think about creative ways in which we can address these program needs. But probably this lack of staffing flexibility or the lack of ability to attract people to come and teach a period or two to fill in gaps presents some challenges. We were just talking the other day about how we can, for example, better use online advanced placement classes through UC as a way to be able to provide a more rigorous and a greater AP program. And, you know, that's something that we're going to explore. So, I just want to share the comments, but I want to go back and make sure I understand your two comments. And that is that I heard you say that the, sometimes in the first column, the first column in this template says identified need and metric. And then, the second column is the description of the goal. So, what I heard you say, that in some cases, the identified needs in the first column almost sounded like the goal. And in some cases, the statement in the second column, where it says description of goal, almost sounded like the need. And that you were looking for some, if you will, internal consistency in how the identified need is phrased versus the description of the goal. So, sometimes Column 1 was more specific than what was listed in Column 2. And sometimes it was the other way around.
Right, yeah. So, like, yeah, Goal 3, the second column says, the overarching goal kind of for both is improving student parent engagement. The second column, creating opportunities where students and parents are engaged together in meaningful activities to improve school climate, such as, and give some examples. So, that is more general, a more general goal that, but, you know, in the first column and Goal 3, you know, provide an athletic director to oversee and manage the athletic program. I mean, that's a very specific, concrete thing that is actually more specific and concrete than...
So, let me just...
Provide access to a staff family resource center that includes a coordinator. That's very specific and concrete instead of creating opportunities for parents who do not speak English to become more involved.
So, let me just use that as an example, just to make sure that staff understands what you're saying. So, using that section, one of the goal, description of goals in Column 2 says extracurricular activities, including sports and visual performing arts. That could also be represented as a need. And if that were stated as a need, then the goal might be to, for example, in the area of sports, to provide a athletic director to oversee and manage the program. So, it's possible in that situation that those could be reversed. Kind of depends on, I guess, what the input from the various stakeholder groups were in terms of how they address identifying a need versus, you know, what the goal will be. But if I understand your comment, we need to be clear that what's in the first column is the statement of need and that what's in the second column really is designed to address the need in the first column. Because I think your second comment was, some of the goal statements in Column 1 are not addressed in Column 2.
Which is because that's not how the stakeholders defined it, defined. So, in Section 2, the template itself to me is sometimes confusing, but the, so it's not the best template. So, I just have to acknowledge that. It's not. The second column states, how do you describe the goal? So, with the stakeholders, they help describe what that goal meant. So, the goal, so this says the student, what it includes, so how they define a goal. A goal could have been, they could have stated a whole long narrative that could have been written as well, or I could have interpreted a long narrative for them. But my spirit was to include the voices of people who actually gave input. And so, if this is how they define that, that's exactly how, what I wrote. The first one is basically, in order to do that, what do we need? And so, that's where the critical need came from. So, no, it may not look like the most, what do I want to say, polished, but the intent was not to be polished. The intent was to actually have stakeholders believe and feel, well, not even believe, but know and feel that their voices are heard and they can actually... So no, it may not look like the most, what would I say, polished, but the intent was not to be polished, the intent was to actually have stakeholders believe and feel, well, not even believe, but know, and feel that their voices are heard, and they can actually see their language. And it's not language that I've interpreted, or Mark has interpreted, or anybody on cabinet has interpreted that for them.
You know.
So it may, and so that's, that's why it may not look as polished.
And I, I guess, you know, sitting here and kind of reflecting on this conversation, I think the, the second column may be okay with that level of generality. And I, I actually like the broadness of the goals of increasing opportunities for parents who don't speak English to become more involved. And those are good goals we should keep in front of us, and then figure out, you know, in the next section, what are we doing to, to live up to that, and where are we putting our money? So I, I think I'm okay with that level of generality. I think the confusion comes from the first column, again, of, the first column is really just supposed to be the, the specific need and metric in a very general sense. And sometimes it's a need and metric, indeed, at the end of goal three, there's like a whole list of metrics, enrollment numbers and after-school programming, teacher-parent participation. I think that, that's the kind of thing it's supposed to be, and the need is, you know, greater parent engagement, period. And so I don't think we need all, all the narrative in that first column. I think we need general need and specific metrics that we're going to measure the progress by. The second column, okay with good level of general goals. The, the, I think the first column, as I look at it, is trying to do two different things at one time, what I just said. And also, sometimes it's articulating goals, some goals we're not going to get to, some goals we are. And I, and I, and I, so I, like, I, I, I would suggest not having it serve that purpose.
So do you have.
Except, except to the extent, the way that, that the Berkeley LCAP did that I gave you, that, and, and I'll forward it to you as well, Ms. Allen. Berkeley, they made that, sort of that, the bolded thing that you have in the first column of the goals, was a horizontal. They had a horizontal band, so here's what we're going to do to strengthen instructional needs for our students. And then under that, they started listing their, the goals that you would have in the second column.
So are we, so that's the example that we're using, so we're basically basing off what Berkeley Unified is doing? And I just, I just want, I just want to be clear, because, again, the nature of it is to have stakeholders, and that, so if I go to the point where I'm interpreting what stakeholders are saying, then their true voice is in here. But I'm just taking direction from what you're stating. So if we're using Berkeley's as, as a sample, then we are, that, that's who we're modeling after.
Yeah, I think, I think actually what I hear you saying is that in the way that they structured their template, what is currently in our column one became the, and not to introduce a new word, but in some ways I would call overarching need. Right.
That then led to the definition of goals in column one. So it's like an overarching goal and subgoals.
Right.
And to the extent that what's in our column one was input we receive from stakeholder groups, it could still be maintained within that kind of a format.
Yeah, and I, I thought I heard you say that the input from stakeholder group is actually most reflected in column two.
No, it's reflected in both. So the template that I gave them to do the categorizing, particularly teachers, because, and especially it occurred at the, both at staff meetings, because most of this will be implemented by staff. So to have them actually define it means they take more ownership of it. And when you actually see your language in LCAP, you take more ownership versus it's just generic and we redefined it for them. So I mean, we can change, we can shift it to make it look more like Berkeley Unified. However, just understanding the spirit of it, both of these columns come from stakeholders, and exactly what those groups have stated is their direct language.
Yeah, so, so just to, just to conclude, yeah, I think, I think it would be helpful to, to state their language, maybe in a, in a shortened form or something, in a, in a overarching goal that the second column goals serve, and, and to the extent that the first column is serving the purpose of, you know, identifying needs and metrics, I think that it can still do that. And I'm not, I don't want you to go to Berkeley and say, all right, well, we're just going to do Berkeley. I want you to build off of what you have here, because I think in, in many ways, this is superior to Berkeley's.
You know, hearing you go back and forth on this, one of the things that I keep hearing you mention is the stakeholders. And I think if you present this to them, and they feel like it really is an accurate reflection of them, I would be concerned if we water it down and do it some other way. Because I agree with you, there's a high level of buy-in if it's reflective of both parents and staff's words. So have you presented this to them, or I guess this is the first presenting of this?
This is the first presenting of, of this to you all, so.
Have, have the stakeholders seen it?
Stakeholders have seen another version, so I didn't do it in a template form, but I did a different version. And so it's the same wording that comes from that initial version.
And so between now and the next showing, I guess, for me, if you can get some feedback from them on how they're following it, and how they feel about how reflective it is of what they've identified, that would be helpful. Because I think we want this to be meaningful, not just to the board, but I think to everybody involved. And I'm really hearing that to the core of what you did in the way you're presenting it, is that you really want to use their words, so when they look at it, you know, the stakeholders say, oh, I remember what we talked about that. And so I think that's a really meaningful, for me, that would be very meaningful to sort of have, you know, the stakeholders sort of have some buy, buy-in, but also sign off on the final product.
Yeah, I think we would have to kind of reformat and restate some of these things in such a way that the stakeholders gave input still recognize it was what they contributed. Obviously, it's, it's, it's complicated enough for staff, but it's complicated as mu, for laypeople, lay stakeholders, to differentiate with any degree of accuracy what identified needs and metric statements look like or sound like versus a description of the goal. So when you're soliciting kind of input, as much as you try to define what kinds of statements should fit in those columns, sometimes it's not perfect. And so it looks like what they contributed as identified need probably may be, well, a goal for some other need that's reframed. So I appreciate your comments, because I think we have to find a balance, make sure that stakeholders, when they see this final document, says, yes, that reflects what our input is. The challenge for staff will be to try to reframe some of the statements in such a way that there's some internal consistency down through each column, but without editing it such that we're eliminating things or concepts that the stakeholders contributed. And I think that's what Ms. Allen is trying to honor. And I think in the, in our school district, little school district as we have, where it's always been a little bit of a challenge to get parents engaged, because even when I was here, that was one of the major focuses of the board, is this process has elicited quite a bit of input. I was able to attend one meeting that was held last week, and I was really pretty impressed with how the five people who attended that, I mean, how engaged and how knowledgeable they were, as they've been through this process, how knowledgeable they were about what this was about. So we'll, we'll do our best in the next iteration to try to address some, some of those concerns, and yet at the same time maintain a kind of the credibility of this document with the stakeholders who contributed to it.
That's great, and I, and I, to circle back to one of my prior comments, I think that the first column doesn't serve the, the purpose or the spirit of the LCAP or our stakeholders well. If we're putting in their goals or needs that we aren't addressing with specific actions, if we're not, if we're not. So I think we should reflect, that's an identified goal or need that you identified, but we're not doing anything about it at this point in time. So that's where I suggested it be in an appendix of such identified goals and needs. But if it doesn't line up in, by the end of the day in section three with a specific action, a specific expenditure, then it, then we're not acting on it at this point.
Can I make one more, one more comment? Am I, do I need to press something? I wanted to say, I'm sorry, you know, I'm still working in my other district, so your numbers look fine. I'm sorry, my, my, half my head is still in my current district. But I do have a question for Mr. Bonnet. We're, you know, everything I've heard in last week about the changes from the state and the governor that I think maybe are coming around state teachers' retirement, has, I know, it seems like it could change a lot of things for the, in terms of the budget outlook. Do you have, can you provide a little bit of just information so far, because I don't know where that's at, but it, it, it sounds surprisingly not good all of a sudden, is a good way to put it.
I haven't costed out the implications of that yet, but what has happened is the governor's proposing that the districts contribute to the STRS deficit to the tune of one point two-five percent going forward in fourteen, fifteen, which is pretty significant cost to districts throughout the state of California. But I have not costed that out for this district as of this meeting right now.
Okay.
That's an easy enough thing for me to do, but I just.
And then over the eight years, it goes up to?
It goes up to nine, so that contribution for the district currently is eight point two-five, next year it would be nine point five. And over the course of a year, several years, it goes up to nineteen percent contribution by districts.
Wow.
Which is significant.
That's dramatic to me. Yeah, so I, I'm just, I was just wondering, thanks for the information, because I'm, I think it's great that you've gotten these great ideas and these needs that we have. I'm just, now, now suddenly this new information is coming from, from, you know, Sacramento that, you know, we, we gave you this budget, and go ahead and plan, and let that, you know, affect your negotiations. And suddenly, oh, by the way, you're going to be kicking in a whole lot of money for state teachers' retirement, which is important. But suddenly that burden is shifting, I guess, in a bigger way to the school district, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a really good point, Dr. Rubio, and, 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 yeah, you, you stated it, that the state, and this was discussed at the CSBA panel that I spoke at two weeks ago, that we had, we're going to, you know, the governor without paying for it is proposing a significant, you know, increase in, in the share. And we, we absolutely need to deal with the, the state teacher retirement liability. I mean, if we don't, it's just getting more expensive, not to. But our organization, that Public Advocates, is against addressing it without having a cost plan to address it. And to put the bulk of the share on districts, and the state only take a little bit, teachers are, they're limited in how much they can take by law. But the state could take more, and they're not, under any current proposals. So, so I think it, I think it is very troubling, and it does potentially significantly undermine flexibility to, to address any of the, the needs Ms. Allen's been out identifying.
Yeah, I'm worried about it, and thanks again, Ms. Allen, for all your work on this, Mr. Bonnet, appreciate it.
Do you want to move on to section three in particular?
So section three are, is, are the areas that are, have been the actions and services that have, that have been identified by stakeholders. And so I'll actually address those and state where, like, with specific groups, particularly where our parent advisory emphasizes, council emphasizes which actions, as well as our D-LAC, our district English advisory council. So on page fifteen, it starts off with provide highly qualified teachers for core subjects. So as we know, the majority of our funding, particularly from our base grant or our general fund, will come from our teachers' salaries. And so I've heard earlier, you know, just to kind of identify and break that down in terms of some type of categories that will help public understand specifically where those dollars are. And the next one is, so in, in addressing all of these, all of these may not be able to be accommodated at all, all of them. So it's not, staff hasn't done, has not gone through it and stated, okay, this is where we think our high needs or priorities are, but this is what stakeholders stated. So right now, it's for the board's knowledge, so either, it'll either be where the board is deliberating and making some of those decisions, or a direction will be given to what staff needs to do next.
Which column are you focused on in section?
Column two.
Column two.
Second column.
Those listing of needs are not, you're saying, you're saying we, we don't figure out exactly how to pay for all of those things at this point?
That is correct, but what you have is the general amount and where those sources would be, but it does not mean that this is exactly what will be implemented next year. So I just want to state that, there still have to be decisions that are made. And so from the board, either it comes at a study session so you can understand it more, or you give direction, next direction to staff in terms of addressing this. So, yeah, so everything that's here does, and maybe that may scare some people, because everything that's here is not what, what will be necessarily implemented in the next year. But this is the, this is what, these are the competing ideas, or competing thoughts. So as I go through them, I'll identify some of the stakeholders and explain what the rationale behind it. So B is provide a full-time PE teacher, so you all have heard, that has come from D-LAC, the NAH School Site Council. And it's also come from the, in terms of the parent advisory council, what they stated is looking at the PE teacher in terms of if there's funding that can come from the base grant, from base or LCFF, but not, not, but it wouldn't come from supplemental concentration funds. So they made it very specific that that would be something, if, if possible, it would come from a base grant. C is provide a full-time technology teacher, that primarily comes from NAH School Site Council. Currently, we have an instructional aide there, but the goal is to hopefully have a full-time teacher. And I think somewhere in, in the, in the plan, I stated what that looks like in terms of what specialty teachers are, because that would, those two would be adding more specialty teachers, teachers to the NAH campus on top of the core teachers. D is a counselor to provide college guidance or administration support. So students have identified it, so as parents of PTO have identified having another counselor at the high school. In some of the, I think, NAH School Site Council, they've identified as a counselor, maybe working with middle school students, sixth through eighth, as well as twelfth, so adding another counselor. Administration has brought up a counselor in terms of being used more as for administrative support, whether it's discipline or just sort of like an assistant principal. Because what the principals have found, there's so much they have to do, they cannot focus on being instructional leaders that, that they're expected to do, because they spend most of their time putting out fires every day. Whether it be discipline, or trying to address it, or parent issues, et cetera. So if they have to continuously focus on that, then the, then prior to that, when, particularly when there was a dean at the high school, and when there were less students at NAH, you had principals who could be more focused on instructional leadership. And that hasn't been the case in the last two years. E is curriculum adoptions, so a lot of that is being taken up by the Common Core Steering Committee in thinking about what adoptions would take place over the next three years. But what has been addressed with the Common Core Implementation Grant is, we've chosen a writing program, K through twelve, and that's where the first year focus will be. So we'll have a staff development, we have the two days before school starts, one of those days will be dedicated to the right tools, and that's the curriculum. And so that is the area that staff wants to, wants to focus on, so we can have common language in terms of writing across the curriculum. And when we have conversations, whether they be in grade levels or vertical articulation, there's some common language in that. So for the most part, Common Core Steering Committee kind of guides and leads that in, in terms of curriculum adoptions. The F is supplemental reading materials for acceleration intervention, English learners with special needs. And so is G is the technology supplemental materials for acceleration intervention, English learners and students with special needs. And that came up primarily from staff, as well as the parent advisory council, and D-LAC have also identified those as areas to, to be addressed with the, some of our base grant. H is to provide more AP online and elective courses. So with that, that's been identified from students at ESS, as well as staff from ESS and the PTO and administration. So again, the goal is to try to provide more AP courses by looking at either online, or how, what we can do to have more advanced courses with concurrent enrollment and partnerships with our community colleges. But as a school of under three hundred, is challenging to add more courses without having that ratio of one, one teacher to maybe ten students or fifteen students. So that's, that is, that's a challenge, but it's a need that the students have, and the staff have stated over and over in terms of students being able to compete for college. Where on their college application can they actually address that they've taken rigorous courses? can they actually address that they've taken rigorous courses or AP courses or honors courses? I is provide professional development for staff in Common Core Response to Intervention and, I mean Instruction and Intervention, differentiated instruction, which would include special education needs and English, English language development, next generation science standards and technology. Can we do all this in one year? Absolutely not. So, again, this is an area where the Common Core Steering Committee is, is trying to identify the instructional needs, as well as what those professional development needs are, and that's been identified from administration, staff, D-LAC, and then, and our students. So, when the students, they refer to, so I met with the, with students who will hopefully become an LCAP student committee today, and when they make references of, so I explained to them what highly qualified teachers meant, and what that means technically, but also how does it relate in their, in terms of their reality. So, reality is, is they, is really, you can't necessarily say, oh, we don't like this person, so we want to, you know, hire another person, but it's how do you actually develop, develop over, teachers develop over time and what resources would they need in order to, you know, be able to deliver the instruction that, that teachers will want to and also students will want to receive. So, the next item, so that's for Goal 1. So, those are all the critical needs that came up in Goal 1 from various stakeholders. Then from Goal 2, A is to purchase Chrome laptops with 30 devices each, so that has been done, and that was, that was through parcel tax and the, well, I'll say general fund, but specifically it was done through the Common Core Implementation Grant, which I should probably state. So, that's only, but that's only for the devices, so those are, so actually, we have 60 devices, or how many of the devices that we order for the S-Back, but actually, this A is what we'll do over the next three years. So, the goal is to actually have 30 devices in each classroom, so each teacher can have their own set of Chromes, and not necessarily have to share back and forth with one another. So, that's the goal over time, and to do that, we'll probably have to use parcel tax and general funds if that's the case. B, purchase a student information assessment data system. So, currently, we have that, a data director, but the Common Core Steering Committee wants to investigate a user-friendly system such as, what's that, illuminations or illuminate and oars? So, while there's funding to, that's addressed for data director, we want to, it's an area in high need of concern, but we're looking at another program. C is to provide social emotional support, such as positive behavioral intervention systems and mental health services facilitated by wellness programs, and through our behavior support teams at each school, which addresses, which is in the framework of response to instruction and intervention. And basically, this has been identified by staff, by students and ESS PTO, is to, while we have academics, what we've noticed over the last few years, and including a very extensive presentation that you had from Wellness, is that the social, emotional concerns arise and they impact student achievement. And so, this is an area that the wellness team particularly wants to build capacity in, so they can actually provide embedded, job embedded on, you know, coaching for teachers and staff.
I thought that was a really critical part, and I was really impressed to see that in there. People don't address that half of the RTI pyramid nearly often enough, and so I was really glad to see that you had that in there. Thank you.
So, D is, is part of the prior one, is just, and it's really just to give capacity to the wellness staff to provide that type of coaching and staff development. E is to purchase college guidance curriculum, technology and materials, which would include sorts of those activities in terms of being college-ready, like tours, and so that was identified by students and both staff, and, and identifying a curriculum would be very helpful in terms of thinking about that K through 12, and then what are those different divisions, K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12? And so, that's one area that's, that has been identified. So, there's not necessarily, in terms of how much it costs, because we still have to do some investigation, but that, but the first year will be more to kind of identify what it is, and then, and we've worked with College Track, which we've had a contract with them, they've been our consultants for the last two years, and in having them help us think about what a program looks like, the next phase is to actually implement that 9 through 12, and then the next year, 6 through 12, and then after that, K through 12, over the next three years. In Goal 3, we have provide parent workshops and our trainings, and that primarily comes from every stakeholder there is, is to, where parents have access and they're able to actually be advocates for their children, or they can help their children with homework, or be able to help their children enroll or apply to college, actually. So, just that developmental stages where parents have an opportunity to go to a resource center to help them address those needs. We have parents who, this is, you know, the first time having a teenager, or first time, you know, single fathers who have children, or grandparents who are taking care of their children, et cetera, and so that has been identified across the board. The next one is to provide athletic director and adequate budget for uniforms and equipment, and that specifically comes from the D-LAC students and administration. So, currently, we have a principal who serves as the athletic director, the instructional leader, the dean, and everything else in between, and it's been very, and without having facilities, it has been very challenging for him to sort of focus, keep people happy, train coaches, et cetera, and so that's one that came up in terms of specifically having an athletic director, which I believe has been posted already, and it would either be a teacher who's, who will have a period off at the high school and a stipend, or maybe a person from the outside who they can use extra funds, but they'll have, you know, time to actually dedicate to athletic directing. And in this goal, it would seem like it's more, but a lot of it, this is, so this first part primarily is what will be used in terms of the base, what all students will have access to. The next section will go specifically to low-income students, EL students, or the four identified areas of, of students. Also, in, in Goal 3, and they may have been cut off because of the PDF, the after-school programming is another area that's come up, and with the parent advisory, they have addressed music as an area at NAH, and perhaps providing that more as an after-school program, until we're able to provide it as a program that occurs through the day. So, prior to that, we've had it as an after-school program for fourth through sixth graders, and then it became a program where the third graders, I think, third through sixth had recorders or something like that, and that would happen in the day, and then it was an after-school program, and then prior to that, we've had it, the program in the school up until the instructor passed away, and so, and that wasn't replaced, and so parents are concerned about the, the music program, and that was one idea that came from the parent advisory committee. The other area in 3 is are having the SAT and ACT and Casey after-school prep courses, particularly for the 9 through 12, although it's been addressed from the D-LAC for 6th through 8th, and, and looking at that and preparing students for those tests, and also tutoring after school for English learners and, as well as students who are falling below grade level, and maybe looking at our ACES grant to help support that with the base grant.
Are you still on 3A? Was that?
3A, so I'm finished, yes, I'm still 3A. So, any questions about 3A before I go to 3B?
You have my main question on 3A was looking at the, the sort of one-page budget document that I assume Mr. Bonnet provided, is that, it, it says that our year-over-year increase for 1415 compared to what we spent in 1314 for the base grant was $85,000. And the, as you, as you stated, Ms. Allen, the, these list of potential, most of these are general fund and base grant in 3A. So, it's, it adds up to much more than $85,000, our kind of wish list here. So, it's just calling attention, am I reading that right, that we've got, we've got more need here than we have funding for?
That would be correct. The, the year-over-year base increases of about, about $85,000, the, the total increase is, is more than that, but the year-over-year increase for the supplemental concentration grant is, I think, the $241,000.
Right, right. But this Section 3A, these are, you know, sort of general education core program pieces, not sort of the 3B supplemental concentration type things, so.
So, the list of wants by the, by the communities that we polled are reflective in that Section 3?
Okay. So, it, it seems like, to get back to your prior point, we've got to, I guess, on June 12th, sit down and give you direction on, you know, how to, what to prioritize on, on the list here? Okay, well, it's good to know where, where we need to go.
Any other questions on Section 3A?
Let me see.
So, 3B, oh, before I go to 3B, also wanted to just note that in our parent advisory council, that there was also a, a request to evaluate the, because that came up, questions or comments came up a lot about students with special needs, and so one of the recommendations that will come out officially will be to evaluate the learning center and its effectiveness at both schools, and since this will be the third year of implementation, but to actually do a, some type of evaluation to, to see if that's the, that actually is effective, or are we looking again in terms of having some of the specialty classes, such as a special day class, or how we've done resource? So, that just came up, so just so you know, that came up as well. In Section 3B, for low-income pupils, provide a full-time science teacher, and that, that came up from ESS PTO, the ESS staff, administration, the parent advisory council, and the parent advisory council, they, their goal, they looked more at the supplemental concentration funds, and so, all of the, I think John Rubio stated that he saw a lot of personnel, so they, they actually addressed the personnel, but at mid-range. So, while there is a range of, while the range is still here, their calculation was finding a medium, but that's what they really wanted to focus on, was the additional staff that's needed to implement some of these goals. So, A is a full-time science teacher. And B is provide a stipend or bonus pay to staff for data analysis and evaluation, and while that came from, that, that, that came up for administration and for staff, what the parent advisory council stated was to think about a, if, if you don't hire a full person, but think about like a $10,000 stipend for someone to do that. That has been a challenge for us for years, and so typically, we've had an IT person do that, but really, it's usually been a combination of two people. So, prior, it was John Sugiyama and Joe France who, who did that work, and then after that, it was Marty Percassio and John Perry, and so, once those people leave, then there's not necessarily a person who can pick that up. And so, that has been an area that, do we have staff who could do that? Yes, but in terms of their overall job, it adds another huge layer onto it, and so what the advisory council stated was, if we could get a stipend, that's a significant amount, then hopefully, that will help a person who's very savvy about this be able to address some of the needs that we need in terms of data analysis and evaluation. So, C is to provide education, an education specialist access to general education for intervention services through response to interest, instruction and intervention, 25% with four teachers. Currently, at NAH, we have what you call a learning center, and we have four education specialists. And so, in order for them to provide intervention for our general education students, we need to make sure that there's general funds that will, that will address their, that will dress, that will, that will pay for them to actually provide that intervention. And so, it's the four at NAH, the, the current ones at ESS, because they're being, they're, some of their salaries being supported by Title I, they're allowed to also go in and help students. But at NAH, this is specifically for those four teachers, and that's come from administration, our parent advisory council and NAH staff. For D, we have supplemental reading materials for acceleration intervention, English learners and students with special needs. So, that comes from our D-LAC and parent advisory, just to, and for the most part, parent advisory is more of thinking about how we can use these supplemental, as well as, 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 address it with any other general funds that, that can support it, because their focus, again, is really thinking about how can you support personnel. E is to provide hourly pay to staff for after-school tutoring and test prep for intervention on grade six through eight. So, I stated that before, but to address our, the particular needs for our English learners or our low-income students, is to be able to pay staff for quality tutoring. You could pay tutors at times, and so we've done that back and forth, where it's been staff or tutors, and that can happen either way, but, but staff are, really want to be able to provide those services for their students. And that comes from NAH staff and also the D-LAC committee. F is to provide a part-time family resource coordinator, so we currently have one in our district, but to continue, to continue those services, we don't want a family resource center that's empty next year, we want to support one that can help families. And, and that was thoroughly explained in terms of what that person does at one of the wellness presentations. So, that comes from the ESS PTO, parent advisory and administration. The next group of learners are, are English learners, and A is to provide a part-time ESL teacher at Emory Secondary School. Currently, we do not have a teacher or anyone who can give specific supports to our Level Ones or II students, and, and that has, that has been, the last two years, we've, we've had a teacher who tries, but again, he's full-time educational specialist, there's not necessarily the room in, during the day, and so he has to provide after-school, or he tries to pull push-in, but it's not as effective as if we have a teacher who's really dedicated to those students. B is provide one full-time teacher and two instructional aides for English language development. So, this is what we have currently, it already exists, and so this is just shifting, and Mark can explain that further, but this is really shifting some of the EIA money that has gone to supplemental, is that correct, to address the staff that we currently have. So, we currently have this at, the, these three staff members are at NAH, as well as C, the EL coordinator, while Ms. Miller, who's in the audience, is district-wide, but she, but in this case, B and C already exist, and we want to continue to make sure that we're providing those services for our students, as well as the coordination, because she helps, while she helps a lot for district coordination, there's also, it would be very helpful to have the ESL teacher at Emory Secondary to kind of help her out, because it's, it's hard for her to be a coordinator and also provide services as a full-time teacher. So, D is to provide a stip, is again, it's a duplicate, so I explained that, E is a duplicate, I explained that, so that came from low-income students as well. And then F is to provide a Spanish-speaking bilingual parent liaison, and that comes from the D-LAC administration, the NAH School Site Council, and the parent advisory council is to really have a bilingual parent who, who not only is a liaison, but someone who, who does outreach and is, will be dedicated to being at meetings such as school board meetings, or maybe COC meetings, or meetings where parents want to get information, but they don't have a translator or someone who can explain what the information is. And so, that's, that has been one that's come up that's very critical. G is provide translation services in Spanish. So, what we currently have is a part-time, I would say part, part-time staff, who she, what she does, she's housed at NAH, and she provides translation in terms of literature that's provide, that's provided to her, and, but she's, but we probably still need to think about, you know, how can we expand her services, or how can we best maximize, well, I would say maximize her services. So, currently, she's housed at NAH, but she really provides translation. If any staff member sends documents to her, she'll translate them for us, and she will, she's at our D-LAC meetings for translation for the most part, and, you know, she's at the site for parents in terms of if they need her. So, that, so that's the position that currently exists. For foster youth, we have three children that have been identified as foster youth, so where, so we've count, who are also counted as low-income, but we'll utilize, we want, they'll utilize the services for low-income, and if, if items or issues come up specifically, then they, then the wellness team addresses that pretty effectively, and have, and they have been doing that over the last few years in terms of identifying foster students and students who may, who are being raised by their grandparents or other caretakers. In the next section, for re-designated fluent English proficient pupils, most of these services are, are some of the same services for English most of these services are, are some of the same services for English learners. But there's a need to emphasize a different type of professional development, which is what we want to provide for teachers, as well as, um, letter F to, um, make sure that education specialists are also able to address our re-designated, um, fluent English proficient students. So as they, as we have educational specialists who can provide intervention, we want them to also be equipped and have the capacity to address, um, our re-designated English learners. So that's what we have for section B. Any questions in that section?
So on the, um, uh, the, the EL coordinator, and I think you mentioned another position that, that we currently have. This, um, if I understood you correctly, it's reflected here because we view that as, as we should appropriately in, in, um, section 3B of the template to be additional supplemental services we're providing to our high-need students, specifically English learners. And we're using, the question is expenditure, we're using EIA funding, uh, sort of existing EIA funding to continue that EL coordinator position?
That's correct. We're using the EIA funds, approximately $97,000 to fund a full-time aide and a portion of the EL coordinator's position, along with, uh, CELT testing materials and other materials that they require.
Okay, and then the, um, so is the, is the remainder of the funding provided through, with base funds? Or are you proposing some of the new supplemental concentration dollars sort of, you know, backfill that position?
We're currently using parcel tax dollars to fund additional aides and, um, other personnel for EL.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the, the, the way that the formula works is, uh, if we want to continue a program that we're continuing to do, we, we, we should definitely reflect it in our LCAP in 3B. But formula-wise, we should, uh, we can count it as the, uh, prior year expenditure, right? Uh, our, our LCFF supplemental concentration, uh, expenditures this year in total is made up of two parts. One, the prior year expenditures, and two, the new things we're doing to increase or improve services. So, so it goes in the first part, I guess, is, is, is my point.
That's correct. So we can't sup, supplant the parcel tax money that we're currently spending on our EL program.
Better, better state, yeah, I think that's right. They don't use the sup, supplemental supply language in LCFF, but I think that's effectively the, the conclusion to be drawn.
So the $241,000 that we're, we're getting in new funds next year needs to go to new services, new programs, not anything that we're currently funding either with our $97,000 of our current su, supplemental concentration monies, which are, were our old EL monies. Nor can we replace the, any of the 241 with parcel, uh, for parcel tax money.
Right. But we can count the, the $97,000 towards our, that, you know, prior year services spent on a duplicated pupil.
That's correct. We can use all of our dollars that we're using in our EL program and sh, show that in the LCAP plan as addressing needs of our, uh, EL population.
Right, right. And the, the, this is sort of a, a different question, but on the, on the base funding, in the, in the other document that you gave us, it shows no increase in base funding over the next three years. All of the increase in supplemental concentration, is that, is that realistic? I mean, given that there's going to be inflation, there's going to be teachers' step in salary increases, there's going to be.
No, I just have, I didn't go out that far.
Okay, so you just cut and paste year one to year two and three?
I just year, did year one, year one, and then did the year-over-year increase on the supplemental grant increases over the next three years.
Okay, so does that mean, in fact, year two and three of the supplemental concentration increases will not be that high because there's going to be, or does it just mean there, there are additional base increases that just are coming but aren't reflected on that page?
They're coming, but they're not reflected on the page because we still need to address issues like the STIRS increase over the next three years.
Right.
We have, uh, other normal course of business, business increases, our PG&E goes up five percent. Uh, step and column costs increase, so, um.
But you're not saying that, that you think supplemental concentration will be less in order to address those?
I haven't identified those yet.
Okay.
Those are a little more difficult to identify in the out-years.
Right.
But we still can make projections based on our current year information and our budget year.
And I guess, I guess you do have a sense of what the supplemental concentration increases should be for year two and three.
I think they're listed on that sheet, yes.
Yeah, they are. So, and, and those, those should stay relatively fixed, assuming the state pays us what they're projecting they're going to pay us.
That's correct.
Yeah. Let's see, other section three. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I love your level of detail, it's not where I'm going with this. I, I wanted, can you explain to me the stipend or bonus pay? What is the data analysis and evaluation that you want done?
So basically, in, in most school districts, you have someone who actually, that's their job. Is that when you like, you, you have benchmarks, like a lot of school districts will have, um, benchmarks, um, throughout the year, maybe four times or three times a year, or you may have a department at a high school that may have assessments or like the elementary school, you usually have someone that you, that is either, is at the district, who takes all their data, um, they analyze it, and they give teachers information in terms of benchmarks, so that it forms their instruction. We don't have that in, we don't have that in this district. And so in order for us, um, if you've seen the work at NEAT's, a lot of it is pencil and paper, um, in binders. At the high school level, it's based on if the teacher knows how to do it or not. But we don't, but when I visited, uh, when I would visit other districts, they have a whole assessment and data division. We don't have that. And so, but it's needed because it's very hard for us to shift our instruction. We, we, when it's, when we're not, we're not sure where students are at any given moment, except for relying on our own classroom or local, um, uh, assessments. So therefore, to have those conversations in grade levels, or to have the conversations as departments or as a school level, sometimes it's very challenging to have that conversation over, um, grades, because we don't have that. So I don't, I don't know if that, if you've, you know, if you have that in like in your district, but in other districts that I've, that I've visited, they have a whole department, we don't have that.
Actually, there's, in my mind, two parts to this. I, I think it's helpful to have that, that person or a data management system that provides, um, timely feedback to teachers so that they can make adjustments in what they do instructionally. I think though, the umbrella for that work needs to begin with the defining of a comprehensive assessment system in the district. So what is the assessment going to look like? What are the sources of data that we need to look at? And increasingly, in more districts, schools are developing what we sometimes refer to as CFAs or Common Formative Assessments, because, um, in the real world, teachers can't, to get results from assessment even three or four days later doesn't help to inform instruction, because that assumes the teacher's going to stop what he or she's doing until they get the assessment results. And we know that that doesn't happen, I mean, that can't happen in the real world. So increasingly, districts have described an assessment system that has a combination of summative assessments, which typically are things like state assessments and, um, things like that. But also then, where schools develop, uh, common formative assessments that teachers can use and look at post-test, pre-testing and post-testing to see where the students are getting it or where they're not. And I think one of the, the pieces that we ought to look at as a district and incorporate as a cost issue here besides the assessment person and an assessment system is, what is the district's comprehensive assessment system look like? What kinds of data are we, uh, do we feel is important to gather? And then, of course, there's the aspect of, once you collect all that data, what's the process for our teachers to analyze the data? So, uh, there is kind of another part of this that we probably really need to look at. And there will be some cost related to that as well.
Yeah, and I will say, John, we have, we've done, like, there has, particularly at NEAT's, there has been a lot that has been identified. The question is, who will do it? Who will do it? Who can do it? Who can gather the data? Who can pull down? In addition, so this is just the academic assessments, but we've also had another, I would say, another layer of just pulling down, uh, information that we need for like grants. So when, when wellness is at, um, when they write grants, we can't get our hands-on assessments and evaluation and data fast enough in order to actually implement it or put that in our grant. So that's another layer that has also, um, come up across the conversations over the past years.
So we don't have a curriculum assessment system in place that's ongoing, that provides real-time feedback to teachers?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and then my other question was on part C. You talk about converting 25% of the FTE for each individual into an intervention specialist. And I'm always, I always worry about mixing the two. Why four times 25 as opposed to one times 100?
Um, because currently we have four, so that would be, that'll assume that we want one person who can teach K through eight. So in this case, we have four educational specialists that are assigned to each loop, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, 7, and 8. And so those teachers would provide that specific intervention to their particular loop or grade levels. Where if you hire one person, then that one person is, is, has to teach kindergarten through eighth grade in terms of intervention.
Okay. So on, on, on the assessment system, um, I mean, it seems like we do have some things, dibbles and that, you know, but I, I don't want to open the whole can of worms, but, uh, you know, now that we've, we don't have a STAR exam, we have to incorporate the S-BAC, and that becomes part of our kind of summative assessment. And, but I, but I, I think we should have a more ongoing, um, real-time feedback formative, that's great. That sounds like, uh, primarily a, a 3A kind of core service as opposed to a supplemental concentration service. So that, that's sort of my first kind of predilection. That said, under the existing regulations, if it's new and an increase in improvement, and we're doing it, we have a high enough concentration of unduplicated kids, we, we could use supplemental concentration dollars to invest in improved data and assessment. So, uh, I will, um, put that out there. That was commentary. That, my, my question specifically, and I'm glad Ms. Miller's here, is, um, on the, on page 22, where you described the, uh, in the, in the bottom row of, um, for English learners, kind of the first sub-action of providing direct instruction in English language development to all English learners by ensuring sites have ELD teachers to provide coaching to general ed teachers and instruction support to students. My question is, i- i- is that only ELD, uh, instruction and support? Is it also, um, SEDI and the, the specially-designed academic instruction in English? Because that is what we've identified in the, the master plan discussions with Ms. Miller as the real need, that teachers aren't conveying in the general ed classroom this kind of scaffolding and structured, uh, instructional approaches that EL students need. And we're, you know, we need to embed that into the, the day-to-day instructions, so.
So that was, what was your ques, specific question?
Is that ELD and SEDI, or is it very specifically just ELD?
No, it's ba, it's basically, so this gives the, it's basically what Ms. Miller has been presenting over the past few years. So it's both, it's both. And so the, the, and that's part of also the differentiated instruction, is that making sure teachers have a toolbox to not only identify their children in terms of what they're designated as, but to also be able to use the appropriate strategies. And the goal is hopefully, even though she's stretched so thin, but to provide some more professional development for teachers to be able to identify that and, and be helpful, and use our educational specialists to also provide services.
I see Ms. Miller shaking her head, so you, yeah.
You need to come to the microphone, Ms. Miller.
Why, why don't you say it on the mic, so folks at home can hear?
Our, our students actually do improve on CELT, but they aren't doing as well in the content areas. So our focus does need to be on that SEDI instruction, the content areas in the classroom. And so we've been talking about the professional development plan for next year to include more SEDI support for teachers.
Great, so that, that, it's great to know that we're planning right. Let, um, so I guess it's just an editorial comment then, let's say it right and make sure it says ELD and SEDI in, in the LCAP, so that, that's, that's communicated. And I think those were my, my main comments on this, uh, section.
So, um, section C and D can be addressed, although it's not here, um, Mark will have information to address that. And then if you all have any questions.
So for C and D, some of that's outlined in the one-sheet page that I gave you with the increase in the LCAP funding for supplemental and concentration grant. But we haven't done that with the base grant dollars. The only information that I gave was related to the instructional dollars that we have budgeted going into 1415 and the pupil services section that is going into 1415. And we did get direction from the board about working and identifying those other costs regarded to those specific goals. This was specifically in the common core area, the instructional materials and, um, personnel.
Yeah, well, the, the, um, 3C, you, you do have the number, it's, it's the, uh, 339, 576. Is, that's what that, that's looking for.
That's correct, yeah.
So, um, uh, but then it, then it, it wants a description. Obviously depends on what we end up selecting, since.
And that's part of the problem with, with section, uh, 3, we haven't identified everything that we're going to use the new dollars for, so it's kind of hard to identify.
So once we do, then, then you, it doesn't have to be a word-for-word replication of what we just said, but it, but it'll be like a summary of.
Right.
Right. And similarly with D, you've, you've identified the percentage, uh, and we will, um, you know, it appears that we'll, we'll be using a quantitative approach to, to meet that by showing that, you know, our increase or improvement meets this 7.14%. Seems very doable, given the, the likely, uh, stuff we'll be putting in 3B.
Right.
Uh, that, that will meet, you know, 7.14% over and above what's in 3A, in essence. Uh, so I, I think you just need to add the narrative to convey that, uh, as well, in kind of a general way.
We'll do that.
Great.
Well, that's it. So if there's no further questions, I'm thinking goodnight.
Well, yeah, again, I, um, really appreciate, um, all the really good work that, that you've done, gathering the input and trying to reflect it in here. You write the template. You're right, the template is a work in progress, and districts and around the state are, you know, everyone's struggling to try to get this done in a kind of useful way this first year. And I think the counties, by all indication, are given a fair amount of leeway to districts to, you know, try to get it right this first year. There are a few minimum things that they're going to want to see, like are we doing our proportionality calculation properly? Are we addressing all the essential elements of the LCAP? But I think, I think there'll be a lot of room for flexibility in how it gets reviewed at the county level. But that said, this is a good, a good first draft, and we've got some, some time to improve on it.
So let me thank you, Vice President Affeldt, and Member Patz, for your feedback and your questions. Let me see if I can summarize what my notes say so that as we develop the second draft, we can move closer toward that final product. Let me first say, when I was first introduced to this last week, I had some major issues with the template. I don't think the template's particularly user-friendly. But as we've gone through it this evening, I can see where the internal structure of the template is supposed to allow you to carry over certain items, mainly goals, from Section 2, for example, to Section 3. So essentially, it should be the same things in Section 2 that get carried over to Column 1 in Section 3. But the template the county gave us isn't particularly formatted in a way that is easy to follow across the page. The relationship between the goal, the actions and services, and what in Year 1, Year 2, and 3 will be the actual action and the cost. So, I mean, I think from a formatting point of view, if the county wants us to use this template, then I think we're going to have to create some lines like on Excel spreadsheets so we can see how things are lined across the page. Because in some cases, you can't see where that actually goal, that goal is actually being funded someplace because it's kind of down lower in the page. So we can, we can work with the formatting thing so it's easy.
I'm sorry, I have to laugh because I had a hand, as you know, in helping to construct this template. And that was our proposal and suggestion. Don't separate this out. How, people are going to be flipping back and forth.
Yeah.
But it's not the county, it's the state, the state and the state board that adopted this template, says you got to use it, and they separated it.
But from a reader's point of view, it's easier to understand it when things are lined up across the page, so you can see what they're addressing. So the other comment was that we need to find a way, not necessarily in deep detail, but find a way to show how the LCFF base funding is being used to address the state priorities. So I got that. There is the comment around making sure that in Section 2, the goals, the statement of needs, the needs and the metrics and the goals, that there's some internal consistency in the degree of specificity in the language in each column. So in your way of thinking, the statement of need and metrics is the overarching piece. So in Berkeley, as a result, they formatted it up across the top of the page. And underneath it was the goals in the first column. So we need to kind of look at the language that is being used so that when people read it, they don't think a statement of need is actually a goal or vice versa.
Yeah, I guess, I think I would slightly modify that, what I heard you say. I think that first column is doing double duty. Sometimes it's an overarching goal, and sometimes it's a need or metric. And so you need to, it probably is the case that we may, may still need a first column. Maybe you'll throw it out. Well, I guess you can't throw it out because we have to use their template.
Well, I think the issue of where it shows up actually is probably less important as long as we find a way to represent it there in order to maintain credibility with stakeholders who've given input on it, as Ms. Allen said. So, but in my mind, the statement of goal, the description of goal, should easily align then to what actions or services are going to be provided in response to the goal. The alignment is not with action and services, with the statement of need. It really is in response to the statement of goal.
Right.
And so we'll look at that, that alignment. Then a comment around technology to make sure that, as I understood your comment, it was really to make sure that all students, including students with special needs, that technology is thought about in the context of making sure we're maximizing the use. At least in the days when I was in special ed, we used to talk about assistive devices, which was at that point, technology, you know, that we focused on, so.
I think it's moving away from assistant devices and making sure that everything's embedded. And I would, don't limit it to technology, it's the curriculum as well.
Right. I think those are probably the main things that I made notes of. I also did want to say that, before we had to go to press with this for the purpose of tonight's board meeting, one of the things we began to work on was looking at the metrics column. Three columns that describe the metrics. We will probably refine in more specific language what those actual metrics are. We were kind of having discussions around, we're talking about graduation rates. And we know how the state calculates, or at least I knew how the state calculated graduation rates. And from the field's point of view, districts really kind of struggled with that. And so we want to be able to define what kind of data makes up the baseline data, and from that baseline data, what kind of improvement we want to see from year to year. We didn't really have the time to really kind of define that in more specific terms. But I think in the next version, you'll see a much more detailed description of what the metrics will look like from Year 1 through Year 3. So that will be another thing that I think we'll be looking at.
Great. And I thought, actually compared to other district LCAPs I've looked at, that the metrics were good. I mean, it was clear and specific in a way that they're supposed to be, that other districts had not always done. So I think, I think you're on the right track, and to make it actually functional that works for us is great. The, I guess, other comment I would add is to make sure you address each of the sub-goals, or sub-priorities, sub-elements, I guess, is how we frequently see it, under each of the state priorities. And there are, not every state priority has a sub-element, but the Williams does, school engagement, and school climate, or student engagement and school climate do in terms of expulsion rates, suspension rates, graduation rates, which it, it sounds like Ms. Allen says they're in there. It's just that was the part that got cut off, some of that. And finally, kind of to go back to a comment that Dr. Rubio made, and not suggesting a grand rewriting, but we want, think about how the LCAP should be telling like our district's mission, right? And, you know, we have a college and career prep mission with a, with a technology plus. And that's what we want to, you know, convey that we're working towards within the framework of these eight state priorities. So I don't know if, you know, there's a way to, to give that framework to it such that that gets conveyed. But I, but I think, yeah, this is, this is a work in progress, but you've, you know, made a lot of, a lot of progress so far and looking forward to the next iteration.
All right, so we're also looking forward to the feedback we get from the county on Friday.
That's going to be very helpful, yeah. I'm glad you're doing that. Hey, Dr. Rubio, did you have any, any final closing comments or thoughts?
No.
Okay. All right, Dr. Rubio's good. All right, I think we're under.